Okay. So, change of plans. I spent yesterday and today reviewing all the comments on the discussion session for Friday and the weekend. And it seemed to me that it might be useful to do an additional study session. And so that's what I'd like to do today. I also heard some complaints about the quality of the video, and so hopefully we'll do a little better this time for those folks who can't be here. So I've added to the website, the discussion session. I'm gonna be adding additional stuff on here, essentially the recording of what we do today. Because I think the study sessions -- excuse me, that's not the right one. That's this one, I need to change that line. So I'll be adding to this an additional video of what we do today. There are a couple of them that I want to do in specific, a couple of problems, but I would prefer if you guys tell me which ones to get started. And then if we don't hit on those, as the hour progresses, we'll do them anyway. So what would you like to start off? Give me an example of something that you have questions or problems with. Nothing. I don't buy it.
You're doing comparative RNA sequences of the structures.
Yeah.
And you have the snips, the ops. If you're comparing a structure that has more base pairs than the loop to one that has less, how do you draw that?
Okay, so the question is, how do you deal when you've got extranucleotides and an alignment based on the tree? So here's the structure alignment problem. So the question is, for example, if you've got an alignment of this one, this one, this one, and this one, this one's got an extranucleotide in it. Or maybe you've got, you're adding this one to a previous alignment of the others, and you've got an extranucleotide. What's the, what's the, what do you do with an extranucleotide in a sequence alignment? What if you have an RNA that's got a nucleotide that other ones don't have? What does that look like in an alignment? It looks like alignment gaps, right? And so what you need to do is pry the alignment apart, put that nucleotide in, and fill it in with gaps for those that don't have it. Alignments aren't static. You can make them bigger or smaller. If you've got columns with nothing but gaps, that means that none of your RNAs have that nucleotide. There's no reason to have that column there. You say that there is no homologous nucleotide in any position. That's like, you know, if you had an alignment of the human hand, and you've got a sixth finger, and nobody has a sixth finger, you wouldn't include that in any analysis. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And so, for example, I mean, this A is gonna be a gap here. Well, if you didn't have that A before, you would just, you would just put a gap there for all gaps. Yep.
So would it be helpful before writing out this complete structure to draw like one of those parentheses and gap diagrams, like a very tall?
Like this. Would it be useful to go ahead and do that? I find it useful, but that's entirely up to you. I, I, I mean, I present those here for you, for these examples, because that's a great guideline for how to do it. Theoretically, you don't need it. Other questions? I'm gonna point something out. I don't have any examples. Oh, here we go. There's a UG pair there. Oh my goodness. UG pairs happen all the time in RNA structure. UG pairs are isomorphic with AU or GC pairs in RNA. This is the whole basis of how wobble bases work in codon anticodon interactions. GU pairs are perfectly good RNA-based pairs. GT pairs in DNA are not. But GU pairs are perfectly good. And are an exact substitute for a more standard once-in-crypt pair. Other questions about the RNA secondary structure stuff?
Just for ease of like writing out all the sequences together, would it be easiest to start if the gentle one has like the most base pairs?
Yes. And so here we've got a long one, and so you might start with this one. Being aware that it may not be the longest sequence everywhere. And so this has got the longest tails, it's got this extra base, but it doesn't have the biggest loop. And so if you start with this one, you're still gonna have to pry it apart and put a gap in to accommodate an extranucleotide at least up here. If you start with the shortest one, you know you're gonna have to add a bunch of gaps to it.
When you're comparing the loops, are there any gaps?
Yeah, so the, so the issue is, if you've got, so for example, between these two, you've got three and four. And you might ask yourself, if you're gonna put a gap in there, where do you put it? And so there's two answers to that question. The first answer is, I haven't told you the best way to do that. And so it really doesn't matter in the loop where you put it. The real answer is, if you compare these two loops, which nucleotides look the most Well, UUU, here's a couple of U's, so maybe these would fit across from here. Here's a C, that's a perimeter, and here's a G, that's a puree. And so if you're gonna align these based on similarity, you would align these two, these two, and those two, and that would be the, the puree would be the extranucleotide.
Is that gonna be a puree inserted?
No. In loops, there's no, if you've got changes in loop size, there's no bias on what nucleotide's going around. There are, this is beyond the scope of this course, there are loop sequences that are much more common than others. And if you look at my examples, one of the things you'll see a lot is UUU, three nucleotide loops. UUCG, GNRA, or CUUG, four nucleotide loops. Those are also quite common. And there's good structural reason for that. Here's a GNRA loop. And then there's some five loops that are also more common than others. And so I don't expect you to know that. That's the kind of stuff you learn in an advanced biochem class, not something you have to know for this. Any other questions about these structures? I went through one of these last time, in terms of adding, adding one. I mean, here you've got four nucleotides, you've got a four-nucleotide helix, and so you would just put in CCUC. The GGGG would go here. You've got two nucleotides in between, put those in. You've got a four-loop and a four-loop that just fills in. Three-nucleotide stem, you've got a three-nucleotide loop and a space for four, but here's one with three, so you would put the three under there. And you've got two nucleotides at the end, two nucleotides here, you've got two there, so you would put them in there and put a gap at the end. But that one's really easy if you have, if you know the basics of how to do it. How would you draw the secondary structure? Do you guys understand how to do that? I'm gonna pull this down. Actually, I'll have to do it this way. So here's a case where putting the parentheses in really does make your life easier. So this is the structure of one of these. Here's an alignment. You've got a four-nucleotide helix, a loop, and that's what these parentheses say. So this pairs with this, this pairs with this, this pairs with this, and this pairs with that. And so in order to draw Z, you just have to draw that, right? So you have a UUU, UUU, UUU. You have a four-U loop. This is the most unrealistic RNA that ever existed, by the way. Four As in a row, and then two As as a tail, and you're done. Does that make sense? So again, the alignment and the structures are two sides of the same coin. If you know one, you know the other. You just have to extract that information from the alignment or from the structures. Okay? That was one of the things I wanted to be sure to cover today. So what would you guys like to chat about? Yeah?
On the in-class version of the exam, would we have to convert, would we have to be able to convert phenograms into dendograms?
So the question is, is you, would you be responsible on the in-class part of the exam to inter-convert phenograms and dendograms? Sure, why not? I mean, I wouldn't generate a tree with 100 sequences and expect you to spend the next hour regenerating it. But a basic tree is straightforward. Now, the expectations might be a little bit different, whereas in the take-home section, I would expect you to use a ruler, and those branch lengths ought to be correct. On this sort of a thing here, you're gonna be using a piece of paper and putting marks on it. And so I'm gonna give you more latitude about how accurate that tree would be. But it's, sure, why not? Is that something you guys want to review real quickly, is how to do that? Yeah? Okay. So let's pull up Manipulating Trees. I think it's in this one. All right. And again, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna show this on the board. So here's a case of a phenogram that I need to draw as a dendrogram. And so you can start anywhere you want on this tree and measure this length, and then draw that. I need a better marker. Draw that length, so that this length is the same as that one. So chlorobaculum. That's this. Now I'm gonna draw this one, which connects to it with a node. It's a very short branch, I need to make sure that I get it the right length. Then there's this one. Notice I can, I can point that in any direction I want. It's a phenogram, it can go anywhere. Now there's a branch this length, I'm gonna put that branch in here, like so. Chlorobium. Here's this branch. Again, that's connected with a node, so I connect it with the node. Make sure the length is right. Measure that, put it here. Now back to this node, which is this node, I've got a branch this length. And then from that, a long branch that goes here. Again, I would make sure that those are the same length. And two short branches that come off of it. Pelodictyon and Prostecoclorus. This one's the tricky one. So this node is this one, right here. How long is this branch gonna be? It's not gonna be this length. Because that's only part of that branch. It's this length plus this length. And so I put that off here, whatever that length is, over there, chlorohupera petta, and I'm done. Now if you have the reverse one, if you have this tree and need to convert it to a phenogram, then this branch, you don't know where to put this root. And so you're free to pick anywhere in here that's convenient, whatever makes the tree look decent. People will generally try to make, you know, the, this outgroup, you know, somewhere amongst the same length as these, as they stick out, but it really doesn't matter. Those are all mathematically equivalent. Does that make sense?
Okay. Would it be wrong to put like a joint coming up? Like say you, where you took the outgroup, instead of having one long line, you just have two different distances in different directions.
So you mean putting the root here instead?
Yeah, if you give it like a bend, just to accommodate both lengths.
Yeah, as long, as long as the length of this and the length of this add up to this, it can be divided any way you want. Because formally speaking, that's not a gnome root. And because it only connects two branches, it's not even really a node. Okay. Now, I'm gonna get started, because it comes up. This one. This one's a little more tricky. Redraw the following tree, put in the EM isolates at the top of the tree for emphasis. It turns out, you can't do this quite. Same sort of thing, this question, if you want to put these in alphabetical order, if you want to put your organism of interest at the top. Here, these are the organisms of interest, and in a publication, you might want to put those up at the top where people will look at them first. So how do you do that? Well, I start with one of them. Let's say I start with EM17. And I put it at the top of the tree. And so again, as long as this branch length is the right, same length, I'm okay. But I can't put this one next, because the next node goes to aquifex. So this is EM17. I can put op, oops, that's short. I can put aquifex here. I can't put all three of these at the top together, because the branch, the tree, the structure simply will not allow it. But the next one, again, this branch should be this length. And this one should be that length. Here's EM19. And then if I want to put this one next, it turns out I can do that, because I've got this branch length there. I can go to this one, that length here. And I can go to this one, that length, and then straight to EM3. That ought to be about to there. So I can do a pretty good job of putting those on top, but I can't put them all lined up on top, because the structure of the tree will not. And if I were to redraw this, I would just continue. Here's this branch here. And the rest of them, I can put in any order I want. Thermatoga maritima, Perfect bacteria musulmanicum, and so forth down the line. I can draw it in, rearrange the tree anywhere I want, within the structure that already exists. Does that make sense? And so in a publication, you might go further and put a box around these, right? So that people look at them. That generally is the purpose of rearranging a tree, is to make your organisms your most interested highlight. The reason this was done this way, in this particular tree, was because these representatives are in kind of a standard order or general order, but people kind of expect if they don't know what an organism is. I mean, here's E. coli, all of a sudden you know what that is, and that's helpful. Here's chromation, people have heard of that, and so forth. EM17, this emphasizes the fact that these sequences are part of deep lineages within the bacterial tree. And so it emphasizes the point that the authors wish to emphasize. Remember that figures, you're trying to make an argument with a figure and a paper, and so you design the figure to make that argument as strong as you can. What's another one you guys would like to chat about?
Like a verbal explanation of like the bootstrapping value and whatnot.
Yeah, okay. So these numbers are the bootstrap values. And so let's, so what is bootstrapping? Well, first, first of all, what do these numbers mean? The bigger that number, the more reliable this node and branch are. Right? And so 100% means, and these are in percent here, means that you've got a lot of confidence in that branch, meaning that EM17 and aquifex paropolis are related to the exclusion of everything else. That's what that node means, right? Or that branch, for that matter. That means that these two are sisters, and everyone else is more distantly related. Here's one that's 86%, that's pretty good. Here's one that's 20%. Red flag, right? That's not very reliable. That's still the most likely branching arrangement, or it wouldn't be on this tree. But only 20% of the trees had this, this node or that branch present, meaning that the exact relationship between maybe these two and that is uncertain. Anything above 50% is reliable, but there are several branches in here that are below 50%. And so there are some aspects of this tree that are uncertain. Now where do these numbers come from? Let's say you've got an alignment, and I'm gonna draw it in this very highly stylized And so let's say, for example, you've got 100 columns in the alignment, 100 positions in the alignment. What you're gonna do is, if you're gonna generate, let's say, 100 trips, so each one represents 1%. And so you would do, you would generate 100 new alignments. And those alignments would be random subsamples of this one. And so you pick a random number, all right, random number from 1 to 100. 42. Right? So you go along here, you pick column 42, and you put it here. Another random number, 12. You look up column 12, you put it here. And you repeat that process over and over again, for the same length of this. So for 100 times, now you've got a new alignment where you've pulled columns out of the original one at random. Some of these will be chosen more than once. You might have another column 12 here, another column 12 there. Some of them will never be chosen, because they're random numbers. And so you've got a new alignment that's the same size as the old one, but with random columns pulled out. Now you generate 100 of those, of these sampled alignments. And you generate a tree from each one. And then you compare that to your original tree, a tree generated from this, and see how many times those branches exist in these randomized alignments. If generating the right tree is dependent on one column, all the phylogenetic information that tells you where an organism goes is based on one column, then sometimes you'll get it, and sometimes you won't, right? And the bootstrap value will be low. The more the phylogenetic signal, the more the evidence that this branch, for example, exists, is scattered in this alignment, the more frequently your alignment will come out correct, and the more reliable therefore it is. Does that make sense? Does that help? Yeah?
So do they have different bootstrapping like experiments, since like one sequence may be picked several times in one?
Right. And so one, one, one column may be selected more than once, but that's true for one alignment. Now you do another alignment, and you do the random numbers again. So statistically, over 100 alignments, each one will be, will be selected approximately the same number of times.
Each row is a different organism?
Each row is a different organism. So this is E. coli, Salmonella, Chagella, Sarasa, et cetera, whatever they might be. And you would, you would take all of them from that in the same order. The computer does this, by the way. You don't have to do this yourself. When you go to the RDP, it'll show you, it'll tell you that it's doing it, but it's just a line of text. More sophisticated programs, you have to do each of the steps manually, but you just tell the computer, generate 100 bootstrap alignments, generate trees from all these alignments. Make a consensus and tell me what the numbers are. It's really pretty straightforward. What were some of the other things that I saw questions about? Anybody have? Yeah?
This was just a specific example from the thought questions.
Let me go back. Whoops, I'm sorry. So old exams. Which year?
2015.
15, okay. Question number 30. Yeah. Tree, the tree below is based on valine tRNA synthetase sequences. So you've got a protein coding gene, and codes for the protein that puts the valine on, on valial trns. The enzyme charges appropriately, yeah, it just says that. Sequences in black are from bacteria. Those in purple are from archaea, and those in green from the eukaryotic nucleus. These sequences are highly conserved, so the alignment looks good. Each of the proteins was tested for valial charging ability, and each one contains only a single valial tRNA. All those things were required to prove to you that these sequences really are what they said they were. That is, they're highly conserved, so you know that the tree isn't artificed up by crappy alignments. They really are valial tRNA synthetases, and not, you know, some of them isolucine or whatever. And each organism contains only one, so it's not some giant gene family, and you're pulling some from one family and some from another. How does this tree differ from the small subunit three kingdom tree, and how would you explain that? Okay. The problem is, is that the three kingdom tree would have these things as a separate branch here, right? Eukaryotes do not come from bacteria, which is what this says they do. How would you explain that? And the root appears identified using a different tRNA synthetase. That's pretty easy to do. Horizontal transfer. Right? Eukaryotes got their valial tRNA synthetase from a bacterium by horizontal, horizontal gene transfer. The most likely source of that transfer, you'll notice that that branch is over here amongst E. coli and Haemophilus influenza, the gamma proteo, or the proteobacteria. This gene probably was taken up by the nucleus from the mitochondria, which are also proteobacteria. That's why this is a thought question, because the answer is not straightforward. It's actually worse than that. There's another tRNA synthetase, not in all animals, but in, not in all eukaryotes, but in animals, comes from spirochetes. And there's no explanation for why that might have happened, but your body uses a tRNA synthetase from spirochetes. These things, tRNA synthetases, are sometimes the basis for some antibiotic resistances. And so that, unlike most genes for central information processing, tRNA synthetases are subject to horizontal transfer. Does that answer your question? And the next one. Ooh, I like this one. Tree below is from this paper, Molecular Revolution, and includes a number of members of the family Bacillus. Bacillus maceterium, Marinus, Mycoides, Virgin Bacillus, here's Halodurans, et cetera, et cetera. The point of the paper is to make the argument that one of these species, Bacillus permianans, was supposedly grown from a spore taken from a rock deposit, from salt, rock salt. This is real. These people took these 250 million-year-old rock deposits. These are halite evaporated salt lakes. And this crystal, crystallized 250 million years ago and trapped Bacillus endosporas. And they drilled into those, sucked the spore out, and grew the organism. And they named it Bacillus permianans, because it came from the Permian era. The authors of this paper argue that this cannot be the case, on the basis of this tree. What's their argument? Their ar, the reason they make this argument is because this branch length is so small. And this is so small. This, there's no, there's no difference in the amount of evolution that has occurred in recent history. that has occurred in recent history between this and all the rest. If this was two hundred and fifty million years old, you're talking about five percent of the entire evolutionary history of life. This branch, this organism, would tree out way back here somewhere as a very short branch. This thing is not really very different from this Selina bacillus maris mortuae, which lives in the Dead Sea today. So this is today, this cannot be two hundred and fifty million years ago. It's about the length, quantitative, these trees are quantitative. Asking, you should, you, if you were looking at this, you should have asked yourself, where would I expect a two hundred and fifty million year old Bacillus to tree out? It certainly wouldn't be so closely related to a modern organism.
So it is impossible?
It is impossible, and in fact, it turns out that when you've got these halite deposits, that they capture little bubbles of saturated brine. And so you've got a rock ma, or a salt matrix, and this little bubble that's completely saturated water. And those little bubbles diffuse around in that rock in the same way that conversely a salt crystal would diffuse around in a liquid brine. And as, as this bubble of liquid diffuses around the sock, the, the rock, it vacuums up organic material and stuff, and it gets contaminated by the outside world as it, as it goes. So this organism, you, uh, you can grow it now from all kinds of salt lakes and things. That doesn't mean, by the way, that ancient bacteria are a myth, there are absolutely clear cases where you're able to resuscitate organisms from, um, amber samples, or from permafrost, or that sort of thing. But not two hundred and fifty million years old. Okay? Does that answer your question? So let's do another one. Let's see. Structure alignments we did, basic, oh, trees, one of the things we probably ought to do is just look at a tree, and make sure we understand how to take it apart, right? Manipulating interpreting trees. Let's do this one. Which organism is the closest relative of Chromation venosum? Here's Chromation, its closest relative is E. coli. Which organisms are the outgroup? Generally speaking, the outgroup is gonna go beyond one side of this node, right? Now, here, there are two things on this branch, and here, there's all the rest, and so this is presumably the outgroup, including these two organisms. Where then is the root of this tree based on this outgroup? The purpose of an outgroup is to allow you to, to know where the root of the rest of the tree is, and that's right here. What is the evolutionary distance between thermos theromothalus and thermomicrobium rosium? I'm going to pull this down here. Thermos theromothalus. And thermomicrobium rosium. So here's the scale bar, this represents whatever that length is, oh point oh five estimated substitutions per position. And so I'm gonna add up the length between those, and that's this branch, plus this branch, plus this branch, and this branch, that is, the distance between those two. Yeah, you just have to basically follow the, the path between them. Now you can add up the length of those four branches, or you can take a shortcut and recognize that, that these nodes here have zero length, and so you can simply take this length back to the common ancestor, and then back out to there. And just take a ruler and measure the length of that, and then see how many point oh fives that is. That's it. Let's see. What is the evolutionary distance between Chloroflexus and the Thana coccos? And so you would just take this, 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 where's Chloroflexus? This. This, this, this. And that. Or from here, back to here, and from here, back to there. Which organisms are most closely related to Chloroflexus arantiaucus and thermomicrobium rosium? So here are these two, what is, what are the relative, what, what other group is related to this one? Go back to the most recent common ancestor of that and something else, and you find thermos and dynococcus. Now, if you wanna know which one is most similar to those, which, th, this is based on ribosomal RNA, which sequences are most similar to these two, that answer would be specifically thermos theromothalus, because that's the shortest distance in the tree from these two to anywhere else. That will be more similar than dynococcus, because that branch is longer. But in terms of the relationship to the organisms, that's the sister group, or I guess cousins you would have to say. EM three is an unknown organism, what is its closest relative in the tree? Here's EM three, its closest relative, you're talking about organism, and so the, its closest relatives are Thermatoga and Prophetobacterium. Excluding the outgroup, what is the most primitive organism in the tree? Primitive means least changed, in terms of whatever measure you're using to generate the tree. And so you could just take a ruler, start here at the root, and slide it this way until you get to the first organism, which is Thermatoga maritima. It's more primitive than any other organism. What's the next most primitive organism? Yeah, you're pointing, but I can't see. Aquifex parophilus. And then these two are probably tied more or less, and then thermos. What's the least primitive organism? Uh, yeah, E. coli looks like, if, then as you slide that line over here until you get to the last remaining sequence, that's E. coli, these are the outgroups, those don't count. Yeah?
To the relatives. So for EM nineteen, would it be wrong to say that Aquifex is a closer relative than EM seventeen?
So, so that's a fine point. So i, if, if you're, if you're, if you're asking which is the, which sequence is most similar to it, remember, these trees are based on sequences. And so the closest, the most closely related sequence is probably Aquifex parophilus. That is, this sequence is most similar to this one, more similar than any of the others. You might wanna take a ruler and measure the distance out here to Thermatoga, but I think you'll find it's a little bit longer than it is to EM, to Aquifex. But if you're talking about the organisms, which organisms are, are most related, um, so, 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 if, if you have, you know, if you're, if you have cousins that are siblings, you're not more closely related to one or the other, right? I mean, my mom's, I have one of my, my mom, one of my mom's sisters has three kids, four kids. Uh, I'm not more closely related to one than the other. And the same would be true here, and so the most close relative to EM nineteen, the organism, is both of these. Does that, does that make some sense? Um, let's see. Circle the last common ancestor of Chromation venosum and Dynococcus radio durans, there's Chromation, there's Dynococcus, the last common ancestor is right here, that's the deepest point you get through when you track the two. There are other common ancestors, of course, any of these beyond that are common ancestors of the two, but that's the last common ancestor. Redraw this tree as a dendrogram, yeah, I won't do that, that'd take up the rest of the time and more. Other questions? How are we doing on time? Ten more minutes. Anything else you wanna do, any problems, anything you wanna talk about? Seventeen from ninety-seven. I suppose I should be thankful you're not going back to nineteen ninety-five, right? Two thousand and seven, you said. Ninety, ninety-seven? Oh my goodness. Which one?
Seventeen is the last one.
Oh my, yeah, here, let me pull this up. I've, I've used this one in various flavors. This tree was constructed using sequences of methionyl tRNAs. Given E. coli, Salmonella, Shagun, Saricia are all very closely related enterobacteria, Bacillus subtilis is a gram positive bacterium, originally included as an outgroup, how can you explain this unusual tree? The problem is Bacillus, this tree out here, is related specifically to these three, and Salmonella is way out there. How could that be in a, a, in a tree of methionyl tRNAs, uh, well, just methionyl tRNAs? So what are some of the things, think about the things that are required for a tree to make sense. One of them is that you're really looking at homologous genes, and the danger, the red flag, is gene families. There are two methionyl tRNAs, the initiator tRNA, and the elongator tRNA. They are homologous to each other, but not directly. And what this means is that you, is that all of these four are maybe the elongator tRNA, and this is the initiator, or vice versa, you don't know which based on this analysis. So you pulled out a non-homologous, or more distantly related homologous, uh, str, sequence, and included it in the tree by accident. The same would be true, for example, if you use genes for, I mean, a, a classic example would be lysosome. Where, uh, you've got a bunch of mammals, and you're doing lysosome genes, but one of them was from the rumen instead of from the eye, or from the ovaries, or something like that. Because there are several lysosome genes in, in animals. A great example would be hemoglobin genes. I mean, there, I don't know how many hemoglobin genes in, in, in animals. There's alpha and beta globin, there's, uh, and, and different versions of them for different developmental stages. So in humans, there's a fetal, a fetal alpha globin, and a fetal beta globin, and an adult alpha globin, and an adult beta globin. If you're gonna generate a tree, you've gotta use all of them the same line, or else you're gonna get them scattered like this. Does that make sense? I can't remember who asked that question, but, yeah. So does that make sense? So another one you'd like to go over? We've got time for one more. Not sure. Aren't you glad you don't have to do this? I'm sure you guys have gone over these, that's a standard one. You've done a lot of those already. Yeah, that's a standard question. Is, is, is there anything else in particular you guys would like to chat about? No? Yeah?
Will we be expected to draw similarity matrix based on transition?
Similarity matrix is based on transitions versus transversions. I don't see why not. Um, I mean, you're just, I mean, I'm, I'm not gonna give you an alignment of a thousand nucleotides, I mean, if I do one of ten, as long as you can count to ten, you can, you can do the problem. That would be a similarity matrix, converting that to a distance matrix would require you to do a conversion, either using math or a graph. I suppose I could ask, give you a graph and ask you to kinda estimate it, but that'd be, that'd be the worst of it. Okay? Any other questions? All right, I'll see you all Wednesday.